Welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Port Clinton City Council for January fourteenth in the Linda Hart Lodge, Council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Lord's Prayer, and Moment of Silence for those serving our country.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, thou art in heaven; thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to the cross from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of the Lord.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ms. Osterheimer, as everyone knows, Mrs. Pipley has resigned at the end of the year, and I had asked Ms. Osterheimer to be the new Court of Counsel. I want to adjourn motion to appoint Ms. Osterheimer as Court of Port Clinton City Council.
So move.
Second, I have a motion to appoint Ms. Osterheimer as Court of Counsel, and Mr. Bealow seconded by Mrs. Phillips. Any discussion? Could you please call the roll? Kate Bealow?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilmann?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with seven to zero. Welcome onto our group. Would you please call the roll? Kate Bealow?
Here.
Pat Hobus?
Here.
Beth Gilmann?
Here.
Roseanne Hickman?
Present.
Ryan Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips?
Here.
Jerry Trolle?
Here.
Thank you. Counsel before you, you have the minutes from November twelfth, November twenty-sixth, December tenth, December twenty-third, and the regularly scheduled meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? So move. Thank you. Second, Mrs. Phillips? I have a motion by Ms. Hickman, and a second by Mrs. Phillips. All the neighbors say aye?
Aye.
I propose the same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. The chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance and the rules for notifications of this meeting. We do have a guest presentation this evening. It is Rich Norgard from the Port Clinton Lighthouse Conservancy.
Madam President, members of the council, Mayor Snyder, thank you for this opportunity to present the annual report of the Port Clinton Lighthouse Conservancy. I'll try to be as quick as I can. The Conservancy is financially sound. We have approximately seventy-five hundred dollars in checking and sixty-six thousand dollars in savings, and another twenty-eight thousand dollars in our contingency fund, which was mandated in our aid to the city, which has grown from its initial twenty-five thousand. So we have plenty of money for any day. During 2019, we continued to work on landscaping improvements to the park area adjacent to the lighthouse with completion of landscaping mounds and a walkway paving on the north side of the Derby Pond. The wellings project had eased, has prevented us from completing the work on the south side. However, the city was able to complete shorehand protection on the south side of the pond with input from our landscape architect. We anticipate that working closely with the city, we will be able to complete the paved walkway, additional grading and landscaping, raised beds this spring at a cost that should not exceed ninety thousand dollars. I don't think it's going to come near that, but being conservative, they're saying ninety K. We are still receiving memberships and donations, and will actively solicit grant money to reach that level of money that we need to complete the work, and anticipate being able to fully fund it. In addition, we've been in discussion with the city regarding paving the Jefferson Street parking lot, which would benefit not only lighthouse visitors, but also for other events, in particular the Walleye Festival. The price tag on that project is high, and we're estimating, with the kicking around efforts, we think it's going to probably be somewhere in ninety to one-hundred K range. But we feel that through a risk of fundraising, partnering with like-minded stakeholders, we can maybe not necessarily just come here, but we think we can get it done. Once these improvements have been completed, our focus will be then primarily on maintenance, maintenance of the lighthouse and the grounds, lighthouse and rooftop structures, and then we can kind of maybe get out of the city's hair for the terms of asking for additional things to do. We had our third, and by far most successful, lighthouse festival this past year. We renamed it the Port Clinton Lighthouse Maritime Festival to more accurately reflect the maritime theme of the event. We will continue to grow this event, and for example, this year, we're going to be including an antique boat show as part of the bill. Our dozens contracted five-hundred-and-eighty-six guided tours of the lighthouse, collecting approximately two thousand dollars. We received an additional four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars in donations from visitors. Of course, the lighthouse received many additional hundreds of visitors that just go out there to see it without necessarily touring the structure itself. The number of tours were down this year, which reflects, reflected the general downturn in visitation versus model that lighthouses down. And I understand a number of other tourist attractions were down this year for whatever reason, the economy or whatever it was. We had several light weddings take place, not even the lighthouse itself, but they might use that lighthouse as a backdrop for weddings. In terms of membership, in twenty nineteen, we had a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-nine keepers, which is our paid membership. We have a very high renewal rate, which I think reflects just the support that we get from the community. And of course, we have an additional eighty-five permanent charter members, which were and trying out a plaque at the lighthouse. The majority of the Conservancy's income comes from memberships and associated donations and grants. In addition to funds received from tours, we have had approximately fifty-one hundred dollars in merchandise sales. We do not emphasize selling stuff. We like instead partner with businesses downtown, let them collect money for lighthouse-related stuff, and direct business their way. That's just the way we like to do things. As I said, we continue to receive very, very high credibility rating from the public. We get a lot of publicity from the media, both locally and in our own state and country. For instance, Lake Erie Living Magazine just recently named one of the top lighthouses in Ohio. So all in all, we had a good year. We hope that you continue to be a good partner with the city of Port Clinton, and especially with finishing up the projects in the park. And then lastly, on my agenda, we have an annual obligation to the city to present a check for one dollar for rental for the lighthouse, and one dollar of rental for the boathouse. So I would like to at this time present our check for two dollars.
Thank you very much. Just look forward to many more years of fine service. You do a wonderful job for our community. And for the record, the check is made out to the city of Port Clinton, not like, so thank you. We'll get that positive tonight if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Norgard.
Thank you.
Please read the name and address for the person signed up for the call.
I'm Michelle Gregor, at two-seventeen Oak Street, Port Clinton, Ohio. Hi, I'm Ms. Michelle Gregor. And I've lived in Port Clinton for just a little over a year. From the house, it's going to be my forever home, so I have a big interest in the community. Plus, I'm kind of semi-retired. I was retired, and I'm a big people. No, you know, semi-retired. The issue I wanted to bring up is the communication between the government and the citizens. And I wonder if anyone has a concern about that, or if you think that could be improved. It started out when there was a water boil advisory. Everybody, I talked about, I didn't hear about it. I didn't hear about it. That didn't get out. What else was there? There was, you know, some, something put out by the county regarding Harley, and their website crashed. That really bothered me, you know, that we used that form of communication when it wasn't effective. The last place I lived was Washington, Ohio, and they had a couple of things they did that they could get emergency information out to. Of course, you had to sign up for this, and that right in itself, giving people aware of how you were communicating to them, is a job in itself. After the water, the water issue, and that didn't get communicated, I had spent a night just poking around on the internet, found a great site out in California. I mean, their whole study was listed, how to reach people and how to get them. But I got a new iPad for Christmas, so my bookmarked site wasn't available to me to share with you. My question is, I mean, and I have personally tried to get a question answered through the website, through the city website, you know, contact us. Never heard from anybody. I've sent some emails, never heard from anybody. If there is an interest, I am willing to volunteer my time to assist, if anyone is interested in looking into that, or if you're, you know, that's my people. So on the sheet, I did put my phone number also, so if anybody would want to call me in. You know, I don't really use Facebook. You know, these last three weeks, like, that's how I had to get all the information is on Facebook, and I don't, I don't think we should rely on Facebook, and I don't really want to. There's so many sites, I just, I started blocking so many people, and I just don't want to put someone on my page. So, that was it. Any, like...
You're hired, by the way. Yes. And remember, one of the issues is, you alluded to it slightly, there's just so many options. I heard of one the other day, TikTok. Never heard of TikTok.
I don't know if you all use TikTok.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, there's so many, and you're right, they all require action on the part of the recipient in order to get that. You know, twenty years ago, it was a newspaper, but you got one today.
Right.
Now there's fifty thousand different options, and keeping those, keeping those up to date is a full-time job.
I mean, you know, I did think too, you know, no babies, like, everybody needs a water bill, you know, if there's...
And we utilize that as well. But again, I don't get a water bill. Not that I'm mayor, but I don't get it because of nothing to say. But it's included in my rent that I pay. Let me clarify that.
Right. You could be mayor.
There's a headline tomorrow.
Yeah, this is the whole thing, and I guess the reason why I thought I'll come in here and bring it up is because not only, okay, you can get something all set up, and you can have a webpage, and, you know, but unless you have the manpower to take care of those things, you know, when somebody puts a contact us, you know, that's a whole lot of stuff to do.
We'll be...
Thank you very much.
Let me get your thoughts. Thank you.
Move on. Marriage report?
Thank you, Madam President. It's been a difficult day for the city of Port Clinton. It's always tragic to lose someone, but to lose someone such a young age who's kind of embraced, the community hasn't embraced, and their family is a difficult, a difficult thing to adjust to. My heart goes out to the Dilly family, and my parents feel the same way, and I think I can speak for everyone at the U here, that they have our deepest sympathies and respect. There's another group of people that suffer, but you don't often see that. Although I was not directly involved with the day-to-day operations of the investigation, I purposely stayed as far away as possible. I saw the impact that this investigation had on the men and women that were out there in the field. As a civilian volunteer for the Port Clinton Fire Department, I have a little closer relationship with many of the men and women that were literally out in the field. They all have families, many of them have children, some of them also have grandchildren, so this was a personal, a personal thing. Earlier today, I expressed my feelings towards Chief Hickman and what he's done for our community, and asked him to share that with his men and women. I just came from Fire Department, where I spoke with Chief Johnson, and asked him to do the same to the men and women over there. Spoke with Sheriff LaVoreche, excuse me, earlier today, members of the OSP who were here for the press conference, US Customs and Border Patrol, the Ohio Bureau of Criminal Investigation, who were phenomenal in this, the FBI, and of course, the professional dog handlers who volunteered their time. They drove up from, on the early stages, they drove up from Kentucky, spent the whole day walking through a field, and then drove back to Kentucky later that evening. And of course, the volunteers throughout the community who shared their thoughts and gave their support and blessing. And of course, they also provided food to those out, out searching for Dilly. You know, it's not the resolution that we all hope, but it is a resolution, a disclosure. The family has an opportunity to grieve, and the community has an opportunity to grieve at that closure. So again, my sympathies to the Dilly family. Taking a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn here, just an update on the infrastructure project. A few weeks ago, we talked about the massive project being split into Project A and Project B. Later this week, Mr. Hatfield, Mrs. Schenker, Mr. Colston, and some consultants will be meeting in our new meeting room to develop a plan of action. I anticipate some legislation in front of council shortly to move forward with that plan. The wetlands, you may have noticed that the construction on the western two-thirds of that facility has ceased. The way the federal government operates is unique, to say the least. They are still waiting on funding to come through for the final phase, the eastern one-third of that. We do anticipate that within the next couple of weeks. The funding is out there, it's been approved, they're just waiting on the actual dollars to be deposited in the right accounts. They'll be coming in with their heavy equipment to make the topographic changes to the new portion of that wetlands. This spring then, the groups will come back and plant native species in a portion of the new wetlands to ensure that they hold and take root after evaluation of an undetermined amount of time at this point. They'll move on to another section, repeat that a couple of times. It's a three-to-five-year process before that wetlands will be completely renovated in the terms of the agreement, and then turned over to the city for continued maintenance. And then finally, I would just like to welcome the many new faces that are up here today, including the new old face, Mr. Colston for taking the moniker for the next, however long it turns out to be. We have begun the process of finding a full-time safety service director. We are getting some resumes in. We've given individuals until the thirty-first of this month to apply. There's a six-person review team that will be looking at those, making appropriate interviews, and then moving forward from that point. And as I said, Mr. Colston, as it said, if he's interested or not, I'm not going to ask him for, he's doing the on-the-job interviewer right now, so it's up to his discretion if he'd like to be part of that pool. With that, Madam President, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney General's report?
Thank you, Madam President. Something tonight?
Treacher's report?
Thank you, Madam President. Since it's the end of the year, I thought I'd give a little more comprehensive bed tax report and dock tax reports. The bed taxes in two thousand eighteen were a hundred-and-sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents. This year, they went up by over twenty thousand, so they were one-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-six. Renting out a place in their house, let me know, because this money is helpful to us. Already this year, I've taken in four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. Dock taxes in eighteen were nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. Nineteen is short. I've been making some phone calls, only seven thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Law Director's report?
Thank you, Madam President. I cannot attend any tonight.
Thank you. Safety Service Director's report?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to thank the street department guys that came in here and fixed and rearranged the council chambers, they painted the walls, did the conference room next door for you guys, that you guys can use that, utilize that office. I think it turned out very good, so I'm very happy with the work that they did. We are in the process of removing the restroom at Jefferson Street Pier. That's where the project for the Jefferson Street is going through that area, and so the bathroom will be taken down by us starting probably tomorrow. We took the siding and stuff off to save, and we're moving forward with that. Got guys out working on potholes, and others held pretty good for us to be able to go out and use coal mix and work on potholes. If you do have any, we do have problem reports, and you can send them to Ms. Osterheimer, and she gets into us, and our guys have been reacting pretty quick to them. So I think if you see some real bad ones somewhere, please let me know. We've got a pattern that we're working on, but if there's other spots that really need it, please let us know. We did, did the ice rink put up at Port Clinton Park. It is built up, so we'll see, it's supposed to get colder starting this weekend and next week, so I think that'll be good for, to be able to utilize that. And right now, you can go swimming. Next week, we'll be doing interviews for the semi-skilled position. They took the civil service test last week. Results were certified today by the Civil Service Commission. They're posted on the front door by the number for the applicant, and I've got a committee together to start the interview process, so that will be coming in the near future for us. The Arts Council purchased a recycling fish, I guess is the best way to describe it, and that is going to go on North Madison, so it did come in, we took it off the truck today, and the guys will be working on that there this week when that, bless them, God bless the Dilly family. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Colston. Police Director's report?
Good evening. All I could ask is everybody, thoughts and prayers to the Dilly family and the recent loss of Harley. That's about all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank everyone at your department and all the volunteers. It's greatly appreciated. There are no correspondence this evening. We have no third readings, no second readings, and no new organizations. So we go on to business from the board. Council, you were emailed the proposed twenty-twenty rules of the council, and there's also a copy, a draft copy. Mr. Bealow, if you would like to discuss that. If you have any questions, we'll have a discussion, and I would like to thank Mr. Bealow for taking the time to work on these and to suggest.
Well, they're not approved yet, but thank you. I hope they'll be approved tonight. I'll just touch on three of the rules, which are clearly significant changes. Under Rule Five, which is the schedule of business as a modified updated version of the city council agenda, so new items and some sequencing changes. Committee reports by council committee chairs, actual business from the board in this portion, which are motions, debates about actual legislation or other actions the council wishes to take. Then public service announcements at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, once we address all the other business issues. At Rule Five, you'll see that in the back, there's exhibit A, which is the proposed new council agenda. It'll look very similar, but I think it's an improvement. Under Rule Eight, there's a change to the committees of council, which would drop the number from six to five to focus, refocus our attention on council to more, like, the more important developments. And I'll just read the passage, which is included in the rule package. The former committees on infrastructure and parks and recreation are consolidated into Environment and Public Works Committee, which are stationed over streets, sewer, water, parks, cemetery, and related city services and projects. Emergency services, as we organize into safety services with jurisdiction as before police acquire, and related state federal partnerships and similar projects. Planning, Development, and Laws, Rules, and Organizations Committee are consolidated into Economic and Community Development Committee. Jurisdiction over zoning, planning, incentive programs, county and state partnerships, main street chamber. And then a new committee, the Arts and Culture Committee, is established, with a focus on city efforts to support and supplement non-governmental organizations' activities in this sector. And then the Finance Committee is retained as is. The other change to Rule Eight of the committees of council is the council, is the committee schedule. We're proposing that committees meet as may be found necessary at the discretion of the committee chair, foregoing the monthly rotation of meetings. I think this is a better account, certainly, than my schedule, but I think other people's schedules minimize schedule changes that need to go off the public notice, and to make us more nimble and more responsive to those major requests of committees to consider legislation on a timely basis, as opposed to, we take this up, well, yeah, we just had our meeting, we'll see you again in a month, but if we can call a meeting. Still have at least the twelve meetings per year that have been scheduled, so it would be no less work, it would be a more accommodated, more nimble schedule that we call as needed. And that would run through the clerk for public posting, just as we normally do with the schedule changes. And related to that, who goes in, there's acting pro tem, but the pro tem is not here, and Mrs. Sardi is not here, it's just the course of finding changes to the committee chairs who serve in that role to match the change to the committee law, or the committee line. And that's the summary. We're proposing it could help us focus better, considering coming down rabbit holes, we're not producing as much, we might be more effective in style. So I'd ask you to approve the rules on the sitting. Thank you, Madam President.
Questions, discussion?
Madam President, I read the whole thing while you stand on. It makes sense. It's certainly more workable than some of the things that we've done in the past. Did not see anything inherently razor-like. We may discover some at a later time issue, and that, particularly...
Does council wish to take any action? What do you think, Mr. Bealow?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the rules of council.
I accept. And Osha, Florida, got the proposed twenty-twenty rules of council. And Mr. Trolle, second, by Mrs. Phillips. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Kate Bealow?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilmann?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, second to zero. Without the adoption of the twenty-twenty council rules, as president of council, I wish to appoint Mr. Bealow as the president of council, and I would adjourn motion. So move. Thank you. I have a second or second discussion?
Madam President, Mr. Bealow's held deposition in the past, and he's done a fine job.
Madam President, as long as you can guarantee you won't be as absent as the people in the past, I have no expectation of approaching, but happy to help.
I think I've missed two council meetings since I've been on in six years, and this was when I had my hip surgery, and my husband wouldn't fight me here, so...
Bravo.
Otherwise, I wouldn't have been here. So I, a motion by Mrs. Gilman, second. By Mrs. Hickman, sorry. Yeah. I can write down my handles. Would the, please call the roll. Kate Bealow?
Yes.
Pat Hobus?
Yes.
Beth Gilmann?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, seven to zero. Now we look on to council reports. Mr. Bealow, next.
Nothing worse than that, Madam President. Thank you.
Mrs. Phillips? Thank you, Madam President. I would like to say welcome to the group members that we have. Also, I would like to say congratulations to the new council president, Lisa Sardi. Thank you for returning the furniture back to the way the room was designed. Thank you for returning the furniture back to the way the room was designed. This evening, I could hear and see everything, which is what I, as a councilman, am supposed to do. This has been a problem for a few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. You're welcome. Newcomers. Mrs. Phillips, I asked her to come over and there and we spent the evening showing us around a lot of new things and I have to say, it's really exciting because there are a lot of good things coming to the city, there's a lot of vision, which is exciting for me because sometimes you kind of shoot from the hip, you don't have a big plan and it looks like there's finally a really good general overview of some really good things coming, so I just wanted to congratulate everybody. I wanted to say a special thank you to the chief and all of your men and women. And yeah, that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to echo what the mayor said in regards to the police department, Chief Hickman, fire, every, every associated agency, and what Mrs. Phillips said about the room setup. It's much appreciated. Something else, though?
Mr. Trolle?
Welcome, everyone, and I'm really glad the room's back because Margaret's happy now. And I like it when Margaret's happy. I'm just sad you won't sit next to me today, I need pop drops. Sandy and Jerry, I need pop drops.
Next month, next month.
And that is all, Madam President. Thank you.
Mr. Trolle, welcome back.
Thank you very much. It's good to be back. Thank you for doing this for me. And I just want to reiterate what the council has said, God bless the law enforcement and all those of all.
Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you. And I like the room this way, too, you can hear everything, see everybody and hi. And my shout out to the first go out to the Dilly family and I really want to thank the police chief for everything that you've done. I have an interaction for you, I've watched all your videos on Facebook, on TV. You guys do a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. Just one thing I just happened to notice, welcome back, Mrs. Ira. Those of you that don't know, she has been coming to city council meetings, literally, since before I was born. Took a slight hiatus. Well, maybe a little, okay.
How old are you?
I'm 90.
I was born in '71.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were asking Mrs. Ira.
It's great to see you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Colston, if you could thank the workers for everything they've done. I love the way it turned out. New change, new beginning, 2020, we'll move on. And I thought some prayers to the Dilly family. I want to entertain a motion to withdraw.
Madam President, and with this August, body of judgment.
A second.
A second.
Thank you. All clear. Go on, Mayor.
Bye.
Very good.